So we don't get confused.
Okay, great. Well, welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order for Monday, March 21st. For anyone who is watching us on live stream, we are having some audio challenges. This meeting will be replaced with a clean copy, so we do apologize that there might be some audio technical difficulties this evening. We will first move to our town manager's report. So John, I'll turn it to you.
Yes, well, I think is everyone can, maybe who haven't been watching the budget meetings, but for those who are watching live, they can see our entire faces. So this is the first select board meeting that we, you can see more than just our eyes, which is kind of a somewhat exciting thing. So that, that, that's part of a larger effort across the town to really follow what CDC has been doing. And so in all town buildings, we're making masking optional, supporting those who want to be masked, but, but saying those who, you know, who make that choice otherwise can, can do so. So we have a lot going on there. Tonight is our first, though the Parks Committee had done this work, has done this work in years past, this will be our first work plan of adopting, that we'll be adopting. And I know that the Harbor Committee and Conservation Commission will be up in their next, next month's meetings. So hopefully we'll have a long list of these committees coming back in, engaging with the board, the board engaging with the work plans, trying to make sure that all the items that the five of you see are, you know, considered and part of the work of, of that, those committees. You know, I know there was a lot of conversation during the budget process, for example, about water quality at, at Clam Cove. That's something that the Conservation Commission has done tremendous work with water, you know, monitoring. That's a great time for that conversation. So I hope, I hope we'll be able to somewhat continue those, those, those steps. The second item is, as I noted, the President Biden signed off on the disaster declaration for Knox, Waldo, and, let's see, yeah, York Counties, which includes the storm damage that we incurred on Halloween last year. This is really, usually this is like the, like the second step of many, but because we've gone through the wringer of sorts and getting even to this point, really, we're probably a little bit further down the road than we usually are. The real trick will be to try to ensure that the work that we believe needs to be accomplished in those areas, particularly Robinson Drive, Chris's Road, Scott's Road, there's the intersection there, Mount Pleasant, a number of other spots, that, that work is fully reimbursed. And that's going to be a challenge. I will just state, in talking with folks with, from Mima and Ray Sisk, our county EMA Director, it, it will be a challenge. Megan's already started work on that process, and we've been in contact on this. So we are moving forward. It may take a number of different avenues to try to pull those funds together, but that's fully the, the intent here is to ensure that little to no money is spent off property tax dollars in Rockport to fund these federally declared disasters. That's the person, that's the purpose of those proj, those, those parts of the federal government. That's why they're there, and let's, this is why we pay our federal taxes for things like this to work as it should. On, on, on a related note, we also received a pair of stream crossing grants. I'm looking at a big, big monitor with Orion's face on it, who is obviously a big part in helping us obtain those. Many thanks to, you know, Mike Young and Megan and Will Gartley, Gartley Endorsky, who worked on those as well. But that's $250,000 that the town will be able to apply towards those two really important stream crossing entities. I had no idea the Atlantic salmon were such an, I'm growing up here my whole life, never really thought much about the Atlantic salmon, but I will now. So those are two areas that are important to their habitat, and that's partly why this was viewed so strongly by my main D P. So that will be a, a big bonus and something we'll be able to use to fix both of those, those concerns. Moving forward, and I'm, I'm going to probably talk through some of these because they are big, big issues.
Yeah, that's fine.
I usually don't, but it's been a bit. I want people to pay attention. Not here, but out there. We will be, I expect we'll have some letters on new assessments coming in the, in the next month or so. So keep your eyes out for those. The nomination papers are currently available at the town office for a number of positions. There's a select board term that Denise has right here. We have three seats on the Budget Committee for a three-year term. We have three seat, or excuse me, we have two seats on the Library Committee and one seat on the SAD 28 Board. So those are, obviously those are available. People can go into the town office and take out nomination papers. It's a, it's a, as all of you can say, it's a lot of fun and everyone enjoys public service. And hopefully all of you could speak well to that time. It's, it's certainly rewarding and, and it's a lot of time. But one thing I do want to mention is I put in here is April 15th. Linda got back to me today and she said, actually, I looked at the dates again, it is April 14th. So she's adjusted, anyone who's got, who's already taken out papers, the 15th will be acceptable, but really want those back on the 14th at 5:00 P. M. So take care of that. And, you know, there's, there's a number of, as the, this is a lengthy report, as, as it seems per usual here. But we are also looking for a, you know, a new position, or a position that we've had for administrative assistant in our planning codes department. It's a full-time position that's been vacant since the fall. And we are looking for applicants for that. It's a great position. There's a lot of opportunity to grow, I think, in that, in that world. And so we certainly hope we can get some good applicants and people interested, excited to, to join the team, as it were, over the town office.
Great. John, one thing I did just want to mention, and I know it is in here, but I believe that search is still active for the missing person.
Yep, that's right.
So I did just want to call that out. I know that there have been a number of searches. There's been a lot of engagement with the police department, but please continue to be on the lookout for the individual that has been missing now, I believe, for maybe a month.
Yeah, yes.
So. Any other questions for John?
You know, I, I'm sure it may come up perhaps, or if it hasn't already, I don't recall it, but, you know, in the lieu of taxes, Maine Coastal Land Trust presented us with $750, something that they're not required to do, but a lot of them understand, even if it's just a very little, it helps out because, you know, we're good partners with those people in our town. So thanks to them.
Absolutely. Any other comments? All right. Any public input on non-agenda items? Megan, I know we're having live stream issues, but any comments? No? Okay. Any amendments to the agenda?
I guess I'll suggest that we add as a discussion item, the wastewater issues that we've been for the sewer fees and sewer agreement, if we could discuss that.
Okay. All right. The next, we have a motion for our consent agenda.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Four here. John Strand, I see you as well. Okay. All right, moving on to our action items. Our first action item is to act on our committee applications. Mark Haley, I believe we have on the line?
We're trying, but.
Or we're trying, okay.
Zoom is not zooming, so.
Zoom is not letting Mark, okay.
Yeah. Says another host at the moment, so. Yeah, yeah.
John Strand might be able to let him in, because when I logged out from in there, it selected him. So John Strand might be able to let him in.
Were you using the same link in exact session now?
Well, it wasn't supposed to be, but Mark showed up at the end of our meeting.
Right.
John Strand, do you have the technical capability to add Mark Haley that's trying to join the Zoom? We're not sure who the, who the extra host is. You would have a blue box on the top of your screen.
No, I don't.
No, okay. All right. Well, our apologies to Mark, who was planning on joining us.
I can't bite people if.
There he is.
Oh, there he is. Mark has joined us?
He's coming in.
Okay. We will master this at some point. Hey, Mark.
So, yeah.
I saw you briefly earlier and then you.
There, Mark, great. We got you, Mark. Okay. Well, thank you. Apologies for the technical difficulties, but we have your application here to be part of the Board of Assessing Review. And why don't you just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to participate?
Sure thing. So I moved to Rockport. We bought a house about two years ago, up on Mill Street. We were renting a place in Lincolnville prior to that, but we've been in Maine for about three years, my fiancee and I. I work in, I'm an investor in private equity, venture capital, startups, things of that nature. My background, I do have many years of real estate investment experience. So as far as from the kind of assessment angle, I'm, I'm very familiar with how that would work, valuations, et cetera. I sit on the Rockport Planning Board, the, I'm the liaison to the Planning Board, or to the Coordinance Review Committee for the Planning Board. I'm on several nonprofits in the, in the area. I'm the Chair of the Maine Ocean School Foundation, Treasurer for Midcoast Rec Center, and I'm on the United Midcoast Charities Board. So, you know, a lot, a lot of my free time, I like volunteering and kind of giving back to our newly adopted community.
That's great.
What else? I'm originally from outside of Boston, lived in New York City, Southern California, and then Maine.
All right. Well, thank you. All right. Do we have a motion?
I move the board approve Mark Haley to the Board of Assess, Assessment Review?
Yes, that's right.
With the term ending June 2025.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? John Strand, I see you as well. Well, thank you, Mark. We appreciate you and everything that you're giving back, and welcome to the Board of Assessing Review.
Great. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that was quick and easy. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is to act on the MMA Workers' Compensation Safety Incentive Program. John?
Well.
On this?
So this is, this incentive program, it's basically, it, it, it's, it's set up for reducing all, repetitive injuries and accidents that occur in, in your, in your communities. And so what, where we've worked and, and through our hard work in the SHAPE Program that we recently completed our, our review in that, in that room. For those who aren't familiar, SHAPE Program is a, is incredibly involved and, and the highest level of involvement that a, a community can have, individual departments or a town-wide community can have. There aren't that many towns in the state that are actually able to meet those standards, and we're one of them. And so by doing so, that puts us at a, at a, at a higher tier, and that's it, allows us to get a 10% reduction in our workers' comp insurance premium. So it's, it's, this is an immediate dividend to the town and really to the taxpayers to allow us to, you know, to basically reduce the amount. We need some taxpayers to make sure, you know, our employees are safe. And that's a lot of hard work on the, on the backs of our safety committee, Diane and Linda and Megan. I mean, there's a, there's eight or nine on that committee, and they work really hard every year, I mean, once a month, to make sure that safety issues are dealt with in our, in our town, in our town buildings and for our town staff. It's, we really value it in this community, and it really does show. And this is, this is evidence of that, so.
That's great. And I'm assuming, Megan, that that 10% reduction was already included in the budget for.
Yeah, because we're already in the.
We're already in it, okay.
This is just extended and.
Just an extended, okay. Okay. With that, can we have a motion?
I move the board approve the MMA Workers' Compensation Safety Incentive Program resolved as submitted.
Second.
Mark, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Everyone? And John Strand, got you too. There is a form that we will need to sign before you go this evening, so please make sure we take care of that. At 6:20. Okay. The next item is act on the committee work plan for Parks and Beautification.
I wonder if we can put this off for a moment. Doug was hoping to arrive to look at this.
Okay, sure. We can move that, no problem.
I think he was looking for, right here a little bit later, so if we can maybe come back to this item.
We're just so efficient, so.
We're doing so well. Technology included, right?
Yes.
Doug. Doug forgets how important it is to be punctual with these, apparently.
Well, I think part of the issue is I emailed him and said, we'll get you right at the top of the meeting, but we moved the meeting times from probably six, seven to six at some point from his tenure.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So I think he was.
That's fine.
On the old time, but we never talked about to be here at six.
Not a problem. We will, we've got plenty to cover, so we will move ahead to the planning and codes fee schedule revisions. And I know that we have Orion on. Think he's going to walk us through that? John, do you want to tee it up?
Yeah, I mean, briefly, just to, to get Orion started, this was, as we were going through the budget process, I didn't feel overly confident in increasing the amount of permit fees as a revenue to offset planning codes. But Ryan and I had had a conversation about where our fees sit, and I, I, you know, I say ironically, but we, there was also a conversation when we met with the Budget Committee, and the, sort of, that sort of natural genesis of conversation of flowing, it was like, wow, this is already going, you know, where we're headed. So, you know, Ryan went to work and put together these, these revisions. So I think he can talk with a great, great bit more detail of where, where he came from and, and what their, what the changes represent. So go for it, Orion.
So comparing Rockport to Rockport and Camden, where their fee schedules are in comparison of where we're at, I brought us up either in between or a little above, just to put you on what section was in. But putting us into comparable territory with our neighboring municipalities, that was the main goal on that. On the revenue side, we're already generating more revenue than those two municipalities. So with this, it's approximately a 30% increase across the border. We should see a 30% as well. But that will help with covering all of our expenditures. So with that, is there anything on there that speaks out to you that maybe you have a question about?
Any questions?
I guess here's, one of the items that we did add on there was a food truck permit. That's something that's different. Generally, how that was treated was like a peddler's permit. And we're moving away from that because.
Yeah, so Ryan, could you, could you repeat that? I'm sorry. I think you were saying that you've added a food truck permit. It previously was a peddler's, peddler's permit? Is that what it was? Okay.
The food, food truck permit fee would just be the peddler's permit fee previously, now that was, and how that was calculated. The problem with that is maintaining when those permits expire. So what we're proposing now for just food trucks is either you're doing seasonal or you're doing food. And that cleans it up on our end, and what we need to follow up with these food trucks and making sure that they have the proper licenses and where they're supposed to be.
I guess when I do look at that, I see that we've got the season ending August 31st.
My concern.
I would think.
September.
September, because April's like not, you can give up April. You could go May 1 to September 30th would more capture what I would consider anything close to the summer season.
Yeah, April's a little.
What do you?
Even most of the food places like Hazel's and stuff don't open until like late April, right?
Early May, yeah.
Claus, they don't open until May usually.
Yeah.
True. So I modeled that off of the city of Portland, what they had for their dates. For the season, I would encourage people to do yearly permits rather than seasonal, just to make it easier on the town side of it all.
Yeah, I mean, why, why couldn't we just?
What mean we don't even have to offer?
Why couldn't we just call it a, a yearly permit? I mean, if someone wanted to, I mean, if someone wanted to open April, that's great, but they would have to renew every year. Is there any disadvantage to doing that? It might, might be easier paperwork for you, for whomever.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have to make sure they're closing down.
There's a couple of food trucks that we do know that are only here in the season. They're only here in the warmer months and then they disappear. So that would be advantageous for them. It'd be a little more.
Oh, okay, I see. So you have the eight, the 800s for the full year, and then the 500 is the smaller window. Gotcha.
How long did you have the food trucks at Fresh Off the Farm? Those started like May or June, didn't they, and ran through September, beginning of October?
Yeah, down east.
Fresh Off the Farm.
I know she started a little late.
What's up?
Well, she had them brought in. People like Cold Toe Tacos and.
Yeah, there's one over there now.
Brought one in, but it's just sitting there now. I was just wondering when, how, what her frame was there, because.
Well, that, that's the other thing, because how it's structured right now, it's just, if you want it for a week, you come in and you get it for a week. So I can't give you a definitive answer.
Yeah, right.
Gotcha, okay.
I was just trying to get an idea on our season, our actual framing of the season.
So right now, we don't have a season.
You're right, yeah.
This, this is just going off of other municipalities that do have a season.
And what do we charge?
If you think you should bump it back, you can bump it back.
What's the current fee for a food truck? What's the current fee for a food truck?
The current fee, they would do, it's, I'll send it right over here. Oh, no, it was $10, or, yeah, it was, it was like $10 upfront and then $1 additional per day. So it wasn't anything substantial.
I guess I think about, at Harbor Park, we really do want a food truck down there in the summer. I, I don't, I don't know whether 800 would discourage.
So tell me that rate again, I'm sorry. Today, if I had a food truck, I would be, I would do a fee of $10.
And then a dollar for each day.
And then a dollar a day.
Let me pull up the.
So that's quite an increase.
Yeah, if you were going to be there for the summer, that'd be $90 plus, maybe it'd be, end up being 100. And I don't know what it costs us.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
It, it's, it's $30 plus $2 a day. I had it on the wrong line.
$30 plus $2 a day.
I mean, the idea for these fees, at least when we were talking at the Budget Committee, is we wanted to reflect our costs in issuing those permits.
Right. So hold on, let's do a rough calculation. If you do April.
So, yeah, April, July, August.
Six months. So six times 30 days minus 18.
Yeah.
So you're about $360, give or take a few days. So roughly almost $400. And that's on a very loose term of what a peddler is and not really properly going through your food truck. So what other municipalities have done is what I've modeled it off of.
Yeah, okay.
For the food trucks, they would be structured differently.
And just to maybe differentiate that idea a little bit, we may want to have a, a different look as opposed to private versus public on this, you know?
Right.
So use of a viable piece of real estate, oh my goodness, like we have at the Harbor. Whereas Fresh Off the Farm, or Down East, or, or potentially the old, you know, Ford Chevrolet, Libby Chevrolet, trip on your age. Different, different, there may be a different dynamic there. You know, we, we may want to look at, in terms of harbor fees, attack that differently, you know, and, and perhaps fold in this piece of it.
Like the building fees and all that, I have no, I have no concerns with that. And I know that there's a lot of effort that goes into that. We've talked about that a lot, having to go back multiple trips, et cetera. That, these fees should be helping to pay for that.
Would this, would this in any way affect our agreement with Cliff for the R E S property? I mean, they sell things over there.
No, because that, that, it wouldn't, again, that's that private-public, you know, piece to talk about. I think you could, I think you could distinguish that in your agreement as well.
It's public property, but a private business.
Right, absolutely. So I think, you know, as we say, you know, you have to, you have to operate, be able to operate Rockport to be able to use town property. But we may want to, as we look at those agreements in the future, we may want to, not just there, but anywhere on town property, we may want to have a different take on it. I think this is, I would view this as, the old code officer I am, look at it as really the, the time it takes for us to administer, administer the permit and any, the time, you know, to, to review.
Right.
And, and I will say, food trucks have become an increasingly challenging world. You know, last summer, we had a number of different, you know, who's LA, what, what's the standard? Well, the standard, if they say that's your, you know, they're able to, you know, what's the, serve safe, you know, certified, well, you know, anybody can be serve safe, you know?
Right.
I, I can go print that off. So, so I think that it's really about ensure that our, our staff has done their due diligence, fire codes, you know, as far as that goes.
Okay, so it sounds like we need to have some more discussion on the food truck permits.
Yeah, we don't want to discourage people.
Well, right, I know.
And we don't, you know, if somebody's only here for a week.
Well, I mean, how it's currently still written, it, it, it is a peddler permit. There's not a lot changing in our land use ordinance. So if they want to come in and they want to just do a weekend, then they would be treated as a peddler permit.
As a peddler permit, okay.
So you could have the option as a food truck to decide whether you pay the peddler permit or the food truck permit?
You would, but it's more, it's financially in your favor to do the food truck permit for either the season, if you know where to go.
Okay, I got you, okay.
But the shorter term ones have the option of using the peddler permit fee.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I misunderstood that, I'm sorry. I thought if you were selling food, you had to have, you had to choose to do a season or a year. Okay.
I, I think we would have to clarify that too, because I don't think it would be obvious.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it would need to be clear.
Certification.
Okay.
Yeah, combine them into one thing, this, this, or this.
Yeah, and maybe that's what it is. I mean, I don't, I don't know the difference between, I don't know what you consider a peddler versus.
Somebody just selling something.
Then, then what about this, a food truck, so we've got daily rate and then seasonal yearly?
Yeah.
Yes.
Along that line, okay.
Yep, yep.
I can get some numbers for what it could be.
I think that that would be a good, just to make it clear for people to, to, you know.
And the office staff, because that could change and maybe.
Absolutely, yep. Okay. All right. Any other questions for Orion? If not, would someone like to make a motion for that?
I move the board approve the revised planning and code fee schedule as amended?
Yes, I think so, yeah.
Second.
Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? John Strand, I see you as well. Thank you. 6:33. Okay, thank you, Orion.
Thank you.
Doug has joined us, so we will go to act on the committee work plan for the Parks and Beautification Committee.
So Jonathan summoned me.
No one's ever said that. Wow.
Summoned me and presumably to ask questions, answer questions about the five-year plan that the Parks Committee has. And it got me thinking, so perhaps before we dive into this, I might ask a question of Jonathan and of the board.
Sure.
It was about three years ago that the town asked all of the committees, all of the committees, to come up with a five-year plan, as well as a five-year budget to help with financing and help focus the committee's thoughts on what they were going so that they weren't really scattershot approach to things. And being the good committee that we are, the Parks Committee took that under advisement, and we very seriously did it, working with Megan. And I guess my question, Jonathan, is have the other committees done this work also?
But that's not all of them.
Right.
Yeah, I'm trying to get a sense.
Well, I, I mean, well, basically what, what we have in the last year, since this fall, is we've tried to get to a point where maybe five is a little bit bold at this point, present company excluded. But, but apart from that, to at least have committees look year to year and look at their year and. And to bring forth a work plan, not unlike what you have here. Budgets were necessary, some don't require a budget, some do. And to have those folded through the budget process, and to somewhat use this as the model for the other committees to. Um, to fall, fall, follow. Part of that is also the board having the opportunity to look at this work plan and budget. Well, obviously, the budget we've already gone through, but to have at least the work plan, have had that opportunity to engage with committees. And have committees engage with the board, so that there's a real dialogue as to what's happening. The committees aren't off in um, outer space, there, there, you know, there's, there's a real connection. And so, though we have the liaison, you know, process that was back, you know, fifteen, twenty years since we started that. But that's often one member of the committee, sometimes two, or of the board. And so, to get the full, the full conversation, uh, the idea was to really bring those, have those work plans come back, have them approved. Have dialogue so that the committee chair and the board can have that conversation, understand where things are moving for this given committee. Provide the board the opportunity to change the commit- the committee work plan where needed, to say, hey, we'd like you to focus on this, or what about this idea, what about that idea? Um, though probably some of that information's already coming through with the liaisons. And then, we're off to the races. We're, we're, you know, we're out to just uh, to ensure that that vision is carried out. There's an interference from the board, there's an interference from the committee, the, the, the department heads who now have a, a larger role, and need to have a larger role in working with the committees. Understand that the policymakers have decided this is what we wanna see occur on committees. And then, it's my job to make sure that all those things are happening and pulling the right levers.
And the committee can feel supported.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. Board is supportive of all the great work that.
Right, and, and that's the way it should be. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that, a- and I don't have a problem with any of it. But I would say, you know, just, if you're just looking at it in a one-year timeframe. You know, that still tends to be pretty scattershot, because it's, you know, who's on the committee this year? Oh, well, let's do this, so let's do that.
Yeah.
And then it changes the next year, and so things don't flow through. And again, my only interest is, is that uh, this work plan really takes quite a bit of our committee time.
Sure.
Um, over the course of the year, to kinda go through it, and, you know, what did we do last year, what did we accomplish? Do we wanna carry that through to the next year? Uh, so, uh, if it's worthwhile for everybody, we'll be happy to do it. But if we're the only dopes out there doing it. Well, we could do other things, so.
Not to, not to, you know, my wife's a teacher, and so, y- you can't always teach to the star pupil, you teach to all the pupils. And so, you get the gold star, and.
Teacher's pet.
Right, right. I, I got my apple on my desk now, and uh, but no, in all seriousness, it's, I think it's, it's more a, a. If we could get everyone to at least go by one year, maybe then we can look a little bit beyond. But at this point, as you know, committees look very much, you know, meeting by meeting, month by month. And to break that, sometimes it's difficult, so I, I hope we can, we can do that here in the next year or so.
Well, we've enjoyed working with Megan over the three years on these projects, and we think it's worked quite well, so. I can advocate for it. Well, okay, um, uh, you know, you have before you the plan. I certainly don't have any um, prepared comments. There are obviously these two big ticket items. Um, when we're trying to set aside money in the reserve fund to replace the playground equipment in uh, Walker Park. And this next coming year will be uh, our second year uh, of donations. The money from last year uh, is actually gonna be used to replace the merry-go-round that's there. So that's, you know, we're down twelve thousand there already. Our goal for that is fifty thousand dollars total. So if we put in twelve thousand this year, basically, uh, in four years, we'll have enough to, to replace that. The other big ticket item, and if you folks have it in front of you, feel free to jump in. Oh, uh, we asked to set aside ten thousand dollars to uh, begin looking at. Um, the remodeling of Mary Lee Park. This would be in conjunction with some private money. And the idea would be to simply uh, improve the venue in Mary Lee for Performance Arts. Um, we have a, a private uh, entity who's interested in working with us on that. But it's in the very, very, very early stages. Um, and so if the board had uh, reservations about that money, we would certainly understand it. But I think, other than those two big ticket things, I'll entertain any questions that you folks might have. And Denise, feel free to jump in, and Mark is our.
No, I'm.
Liaison.
Plan.
It's a great plan. I think, as Doug said, the committee does work hard on that plan, and gets input from all the committee members. And um, and as you can see, as you read through, you know, when a project, you know, you end up deciding, you know, this, we thought this was a great idea, but it. Maybe turns out, we're not gonna put a lot of it, time into this, so it's a really good bird's eye view of what can be done for our parks.
My uh, question, I guess I have is, by approving the work plan as presented. Are we also locking ourselves into committing to the money, the monies?
I don't think so. The budget process is separate.
No, that's true, but I mean, it, it does outline the, the dollar figures requested in each of those five years. So I don't want anybody to be upset if that doesn't happen.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, I think that's understood.
I just, well, I'm just trying to, trying to make it.
Make it part of the record.
And, and in terms of, so, this is, the difficult part of this is, we are looking at. Uh, so part of this has nothing to do with parks, and, and this is part of us trying to establish the process through which we look at all these work plans and the budgets. Ideally, this should be a process we undertake in the late fall, early winter.
Before the budget process.
You know, and, and, and so, you know, this, this was completed right before Christmas time, and. There was certainly no intent to hold this over until after budget, but we're at a point where, um, you know, I think it's more important to talk about the policy. And the, the, the imp- project implications of what's trying to be accomplished by these committees, uh, as opposed to the timing. So unfortunately, it's, it's, it's a bit awkward timing, I think, but in the, in the larger realm, as this, he said. You, you know, you set the budget, and then the board, you know, the town will vote on it. But I think that the thing I would be looking at is, what, what are the, what are we trying, what is the, what is the, the Parks Committee trying to accomplish? You know, and, and their vision, their outlook, um, you know, I think that's really, um, you know, a key.
It, I mean, part of, you know, I agree, what you, what Doug and, and you guys are doing on the, on the parks, it's great. What Jason is doing with the Marge Jones field is great. Those are the roots that we need to sort of get back to. You know, instead of some of our other things, but we're working at it, so.
Yeah, we, we have a couple, we've, we never agree committees, you know, and I think the planning efforts. You can see that these roots have, have held, and, and three years of doing this. You keep, we keep getting, becoming more and more perfect, you know, towards that end. And I think, as these other committees, as you'll see next month, some have a series of five bullet points, half a page. Sometimes that's what you need, you know, and, and some places, it's, you know, obviously, you know, eight, eight pages, but that's okay. Um, you know, we have to start somewhere, and hopefully we can get everyone to, to start thinking a little bit more broadly than meeting to meeting.
Well.
You know?
How about, uh, I move the board approve the Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee work plan as presented?
Okay, second.
But I have thirty seconds left. Quick update on the library boulder slope. We're hoping to start construction on that in the next three weeks. It's pending a D E P permit. Which is running late, and if we don't start in three weeks, it'll be closer to three to four months. Um, and along with that project, since there was gonna be irrigation up in that boulder slope. The donor uh, has also asked to put irrigation into Memorial Park. Um, so, we're gonna be getting all the information we need for that. It's in addition to the plan that I originally presented to you folks. Uh, but again, the Parks Committee spends a lot of time over there watering and weeding and things like that. And I, you know, Memorial Park is such a special park, um, that I think it, it, it'd be worth going ahead and allowing us to do that, so. Okay.
No, that's great, that's a wonderful gift.
Yes.
Yeah, just keeps giving.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Thank you, Doug. All right, all in favor? John Strand, okay, you're all set. Unanimous, thanks, Doug. And it is six forty-five. Okay, next item up, we have act on the newsletter policy amendment. Um, I think this is a result of budget discussions.
Right.
And we made the decision to move to.
Four.
Four, did we?
Yeah, yeah. So basically, what I, we had a number of months, and there were six, you know, it just, two arms. So what I do is just strike out all the dates. We're go- we'll move to a seasonal uh, publication.
Okay.
I don't think anyone is, is, you know.
No one has set their clock based upon the.
Where is it on January first, so?
You know, I, I gotta tell you, I mean, I, I have had people that don't come to meetings, they don't look at things online, and they have been.
People really like them.
Appreciative of that.
They really do, yep.
Yeah, yeah.
And for the groups, these sort of ancillary groups beyond just the department heads, I wonder, I mean, I, I guess they can just ask Diane what the schedule is.
Yeah.
Rather than, you know, I'm not sure anybody was looking at a policy for that information anyway, but I would wanna make sure people can get the information.
Absolutely, be able to contribute, yes, yep.
I mean, I went through this, and I, I, and I typed and then deleted about four or five times.
Right, yes.
The, the key, I thought, was if we can get a publication out, certainly, certainly before June first. We don't mail all of our, our town reports to all of our residents. Uh, but one thing that we had done for a number of years was a handout that we did at town meeting, that had all of the. This is what we're voting on, and this is what it really means, conversation.
Yeah.
Um, which I think is really helpful, so I'd love to be able to do that in the June first uh, edition, and really make that the key.
Yes.
And then, you know, really, you set apart for the rest of the summer. This is what's going on for the rest of the summer. And then September one, there's another, you know, so trying to make it more seasonal.
Ballot, too.
Right, exactly, so hit November, you know.
I mean, doing it quarterly, would that be, I mean, it's four instead of six.
That's what budget-wise we said, right?
Yeah.
We did four, yeah.
The trick was that, that it's five and seven between June and November, so I couldn't, I couldn't hit it evenly.
Oh, yeah.
So you just maybe go a little bit longer in the winter, so be it, you know, but as you said, if we could set a date of when we want all the submissions in. And, and anyone who wishes to, to be a part of it, will just need to know, they need to be aware, this is the, our next target date, our deadline date, so.
I'll give them more time to clean it up, so there's less typos for me to complain about.
Eric, I'm, I'm gonna have you, I'm gonna have you come in.
You're gonna come and edit it.
I may have you come in. We could use you, I'm coming to the bullpen.
You can send it to me at a time, I'll read, I'll read it ahead.
With that.
I missed last words.
The board approve the amendments to the newsletter policy as presented.
Okay, you have a second?
Second, no.
Eric, second. Any discussion? All in favor? John Strand, I see you as well, thank you. Okay, and it is six forty-nine. All right, the next item we have is to act on an outdoor seating request from Nina June.
So, this is, uh, Orion, again, wrote another memo on this matter. This is a situation that had occurred through the pandemic.
Yes.
And it was a request, and it came before this board. Um, Orion, maybe if you want, you've, you've spoken with Sarah, and maybe you can just speak about her request.
Sure. So, she wants to continue her outdoor seating, which I don't see an issue with. Other than going about it in an ordinance, and then that might prove difficult in the future, just because. Wha- what she was allowed to do happened in a non-normal season. So we don't really know how those tables outside are really gonna act in the downtown with the full swing of a normal summer. So, I'm merely suggesting that we continue uh, permitting her to do this before we change an ordinance. And then I can study it over the summer, and we can see how it's working out, or how to better word it. So that it won't cause a problem.
Well, it, I mean, Orion, I, one of the things to keep in mind, I mean, your sidewalks are what, six feet wide? Ideally.
Uh, ju- just in front of Nina June, it's six feet wide.
Right, so you have to have a four-foot avenue for people to get by. And when you're squeezing them away from the building right there, you have a far higher drop-off because of the nature of the sidewalk and the curb there. I mean, it's not your, it's not your eight-inch granite, you know, as it is out in front of the Opera House, it's probably closer to. A foot and a half.
Yeah.
Or so drop. So my concern would be, and I understand the reason we did it before, to allow her to, to maintain the existence and not go to business, et cetera, et cetera, during a pandemic. But my concern is, when you're, when you're forcing people to go closer to the edge of the sidewalk, when you have a greater drop-off. That's a concern I have. I mean, that's uh.
I think last year, when we granted it, we said the, it had, it was conditioned on protecting that four-foot width. I don't know if that's realistic, but we.
I, but, yeah, protecting it, but yeah, you know, when you take the two, cuz you only got two feet to put a table and a chair, which, that's a stretch.
Right.
And then you're forcing people to walk closer to a curb. I just don't wanna have somebody.
I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent on that, and, and that's why I don't wanna pursue an ordinance amendment, too.
I, I, I mean, I'd just be happy going through the season, if you will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever that season is, I mean, and then.
Right.
Allow you some time, but keep those things in mind, because, you know, studying foot traffic, there's no foot traffic out there, I mean, you know, really?
Yeah, no, very few people use the stires and walk up that sidewalk.
So, I mean, that study is pretty much. It'll, it'll work in, in her favor, which is fine. But the, the big thing is, how can we ensure that we don't have a, somebody going out around somebody and, and.
Falling off.
Falling off the edge of what is not normally.
That, it might be a different issue, which is, that sidewalk is.
Right.
How can we make that?
So anyway, long story short, that's all I have.
As part of that, so let's say we vote and we allow this to continue. What's the recourse if something happens and it doesn't work? Is it, is it like, we know it's a, it's a non-binding agreement? And, you know, at, we could call on a moment's notice and say, you know, you can't do this anymore, I mean, what's the chat, what's, what would we do?
Yeah, so, um, that would fall to the code officer and, and health inspector. If, if the tables are becoming a problem, and people are getting injured, the tables would be removed.
Okay, so we would deal with it through that.
Didn't she limit that to small tables and only two chairs per table last year?
Last year, it was like a forty-eight, I mean, I think it did specifically call out the four-foot.
Yeah, and I thought it was only two tops that she had out there, anyway.
And she does only have those little tiny tables, yes.
Stretches that, I mean, we've got two feet to play with. So I, the other thing, I, I guess when we do the motion is. I'd like to have a, a date added to that, uh, because that pretty much doesn't.
Sure, the, the, so I propose, I think it was October.
Well, the motion, yeah, the motion didn't say.
Oh, yes, in your letter, I see. It's temporary approval for outdoor seating until October thirty-first, with the same requirements as presented before.
So maybe we can, in the motion, even say consistently with the attached letter.
Or at the very end of it, after pedestrians, say through October thirty-first.
And consistent with?
Yeah, but I, the letter calls out the four feet. So when we say sidewalk unencumbered, that's pretty generic in the motion. Whereas the letter is very specific, it's four feet has to be unencumbered.
I would hack up whoever terrible, with the terrible motion as a suggested motion.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
And, and make it say what you wanted to, because I think I agree with, put the date in and put the, put the list in.
Yeah.
I, I think that's probably the better way to know.
Okay, as long as such seating allows. Isn't that right, four feet?
And it doesn't talk about the liquor license in the motion, which I think it needs to.
Can we make the motion so that it just makes this letter part of the motion?
You could.
Cuz the letter's pretty specific.
As outlined in the attached letter.
Yeah, rather than the long motion that has all the conditions.
I move, okay.
So. Is it a, I think Eric just started to touch on that, though. It says, it also supports extending the outdoor liquor license, which I don't know.
Hey, I was gonna bring that up here in just a second.
Okay.
Her, her liquor license for the outdoor seating portion of it expired, and she's currently working with Linda to get the appropriate documentation, bring that back in front of you. bring that back in front of you, get approval for, so.
And that's a separate action by us on the liquor license.
Yeah, and that's why not including.
Okay.
So we maybe can't, well, this just says...
That he supports it, doesn't say that we're approving it, right.
I think we, um, let me try this. I move the board approve the quest of, the request of Sarah Jenkins on behalf of Nina June to utilize a portion of the sidewalk in front of her business to offer street-side seating, so long as such seating does not encumber the use of the sidewalk by pedestrians, uh, and other terms and can, let's see. I don't even, I think I'd just say I'd, to offer side, street-side seating consistent with the terms of the attached memo.
Yep.
Okay, hold on. Okay. Street-side seating consistent with the attached memo is what I have captured.
Okay.
Okay, Denise, do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Eric, second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? John Strand captured you as well. Okay, and it is six fifty-six. Okay, next item, act on the undesigned fund ballot balance policy amendment.
Yeah, so this is, uh, this is again another item that came out of budget discussions, um, and trying to utilize a, a policy to address, you know, the, the conversation that, that occurs in every, any, every municipality in the state of Maine concerning use of, of unassigned fund balance. And, um, I believe it was the good people Hodgson that came up with this, this draft that I liked, uh, the most of all. The amount of, of fund balance in here is twenty-five percent, which is consistent with three months operating expenditures from the current operating budget. So that includes our friends at the county and the school. And again, that's based upon an audit number as of June thirtieth. If there's anything else Megan, do you want to add to that or?
It's basically just outlines what it can and cannot be used for, uh, which our previous policy didn't. Our previous policy was very plain Jane in the fact that you can, it was twelve percent, you can accumulate up to twelve percent and that's it. So this policy elaborates on that a lot more.
Okay.
I'm, so... So does that mean next year's select board slash, well, really, select board would not be able to use any of the unassigned fund balance because we haven't yet met our goal?
Unless, so, these are policies. So at any point, today you could say it's twenty-five and tomorrow you say, you know, twenty-four is a better answer, or it could be twenty-six. It, all it takes is a vote of this body to make a change.
So.
And, and so what I, what I wanted to present you with was a goal, something that, something that I believe that is, is worthy of striving for. Something that we're not currently meeting. And if we start with the goal, and then if, if, if there's agreeance on that, that is the goal, then it really, I think we have to talk about, the next part of the conversation is how do we get to that goal realistically? You know, is, is that a goal that we can, we could, you know, should there be a lesser goal and then we change the policy every year? Or should we set the goal, set the goal standard that we're trying to reach, achieve it over time?
Did I, I, did I miss in here somewhere? What, what is our current percentage?
Twelve.
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 No, 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 what we have in the bank. I mean, what do we?
Oh, with what you're using, eighteen percent.
So we're at eighteen, so we're more than half, we're not quite halfway to, to where we wanna be at twenty-five. So, I mean, I don't wanna hamstring this anyway. I mean, you know, that's the other part of it. Why do we wanna get back together and say, oh, let's just change it at a whim because we need it?
Right, right.
You know, do we just, because we are growing it. We are using it, but we're still growing it as we go every year.
I mean, I think it could be too, something as simple as a singular vote to override the policy for a particular fiscal year. So next year, if you wanted to use two hundred thousand out of it, you could say for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-four, we've decided to override the unassigned fund balance policy that we have for budgeting purposes.
You, you know how much I dislike LD one, but, but in the same fashion that you have LD one and you have to at least acknowledge the fact, we're not doing what LD one is, or we are doing what LD one is. This really effectively is the same sort of concept in terms of what they could say.
I mean, that'll come up in our later conversation because we're gonna have to have verbiage in the warrant article, asking the voters if they want to allow us to go over LD one.
Oh, we're under right at the moment, I believe. We don't have to go over this year.
Well, that's, okay, well.
Yeah. Unless there's something, you know.
Because of this, probably.
We'll get, we'll get to the budget part.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Motion, comments, question?
I, I'm, I'm not gonna necessarily be in favor of changing it to the twenty-five.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time with it. I mean, not that I don't respect what, what you and Megan and...
I mean, we can grow it. I mean, you know, set twenty as a, as a, and then work out from that, but I don't, you know, I don't wanna necessarily have to. I, I'm just...
Have a next select board have to override.
Override it. All right. Consensus on twenty?
That was where I was more comfortable when I initially read it.
Okay. John Strand, any comments from you regarding percentage?
None.
No, okay. All right, so...
Yeah, if we wanted to set a, I mean, that at least encourages us to get a little bit higher.
And I do understand, you know, the reasoning for it.
Uh huh, absolutely.
I just would like to do it in smaller increments.
It's not a very achievable goal anytime soon.
Right. I think once you hit twenty, then you can say, okay, now we've made twenty, now let's go to twenty-two or whatever. Just keep working it until we get to the twenty-five point, because that, that gives us the incentive to not use this money to balance the budget.
Right.
So...
But at twenty, I think is achievable within a year.
So do, do we want to, um, have the motion amended, uh, the fund balance to twenty percent with an ultimate goal of twenty-five? You know, so at least we're acknowledging.
It's the basis for the twenty-five. I mean, who tells us that's a good idea?
Uh, government finance, government finance officers, they're, that organization, and our auditors have done this. Our auditors have done that. That's from where the, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'd at least like to change instead of Board of Selectmen to Town Select Board.
Oh, yes, there we go. Thank you, thank you. Yes, on one point four. Thought I caught him. We didn't. There's two selectmen in there. Strike them out.
Okay, so. Mark, you had a motion.
Well, I, I was just thinking aloud, but how's this sound? I move the board approve the amended unassigned fund balance to represent a twenty percent goal with a future goal of twenty-five percent. I, I'm just saying, you know, does, does that, uh...
That's fine.
Written, it would be twenty.
Maybe with a long-term goal.
Written, it's twenty, but I think you're pledging.
Yeah.
No, we acknowledge it does need to go up. We're just...
We're just gonna take it in bites.
Okay. So I have that I move the board approve the amended unassigned fund balance policy to represent a twenty percent goal with a future goal of twenty-five percent.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yep.
Do I have a second on that?
Sure, second.
Do we have any more discussion? All right, all in favor? John Strand, any, is that a favor or is that a, okay?
I mean, considering how long we've edited it, at twelve percent, you know, we're, we're, we're light years ahead.
We're making progress.
We are making progress, that's for sure.
That's good.
Seven oh five PM, okay. Um, the next item, we, uh, we're discussion item.
Oh, no, we have a discussion item.
Discussion item, yep. So we wanted to talk briefly about wastewater, and if you want to tee that up, John, how we wanna...
Yeah, so, uh, what? There was, uh, there's an item on the Camden Select Board agenda that kicked off about thirty minutes ago, regarding, um, payment of, of wastewater bills, uh, by the town of Rockport. And, um, I, I, I guess my request is that the board set at a future date, in time to appoint two members from the select board to represent, um, the board, um, on the administering committee for the interlocal agreement, uh, with the town of Camden concerning wastewater.
So we will add that to our next agenda, uh, to appoint the representatives to participate in that administering committee. Thank you. All right, with that. Yes, you anxious to a chair? Select Board, I know, Select Board liaison reports. Anyone have, uh, any items they want to provide an update on?
I'll jump in quickly, just on parks. We had a good meeting the other night, um, and thanks to the town, we've got some, I mean, there's gonna be some great music happening this summer and part of that will continue the music series that the Parks Committee started in Mary Leah Park. Those will continue Sundays, but some Sundays during the summer, there will be bigger events over at Harbor Park. That will be sort of separately, separately run by our great new Opera House team and our harbor, harbor group. We also talked at the Parks Committee, the Community Garden, uh, signups are available in the town office, uh, slots are, people are signing up for slots, so, go on over and get a great slot over at March Jones is where that Community Garden is. The, um, bench policy, we talked about that. We've got a good brochure, uh, we're gonna get a note in the Rockport resource coming up and really, uh, spend some time as a committee marketing, uh, the bench policy so that we can have, uh, good-looking, uh, matching park benches in each of our parks. Plenty of seating for everyone who wants to enjoy our parks. And then we went over spring cleanup chores as the, we're all ready for spring and there's, there are things to be done around town, so.
Like my yard.
Yeah. Right, our own yards, right, exactly.
Uh, Legacy Rockport just met, great stuff happening on the, uh, renovation of the Vulcan locomotive. Rockport Steel's doing a beautiful job of redoing that. Uh, Rockport Marine has already done a lot of work on the, um, some of the woodwork related to that. Camden Glass is gonna be putting in glass there and I think, you know, by early June, we should
That's great.
Have that on, on display. Yeah, um, and there will be a fundraiser June fourth to support that, a spaghetti dinner at the, uh, Masonic, temple over on, off of Main Street. So June fourth, we'll get more publicity out about that. Uh, ORC has been dutifully meeting every week, uh, to get ordinances ready for the town ballot. Uh, there'll be a planning commis, planning board meeting this coming Thursday, at which, uh, those ordinances will be reviewed and then those will go on the ballot.
When is that, this Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Some feedback on something.
Yes.
Where is, yes. Where is that? Here?
Is it upstairs?
I believe it's here.
Just a second, I'll take a look.
Yeah.
The, the planning board meeting?
Hey, there he is.
Oh, there, you would know.
Right, right where you're at, right where you're sitting.
Okay, right down here in the parking lot.
What time is it?
Five thirty?
Yes, five thirty.
Five thirty. Right here.
All right, I'll have to try to make that one.
And one other quick thing on Economic Development Committee. They're, um, they've got a list of businesses and there's gonna be some outreach to the various businesses in town to talk to them about what their, what their needs are, how they can grow, what, what, how can we better, um, enable our businesses in town.
That's great. Eric, Mark?
Well, I was just gonna say, I, you know, and I meant to apologize to Doug, I have a conflicting schedule on Wednesdays that normally your meetings start, the Parks meetings start at five. My other commandment starts at six. And so rather than going for a half, and I don't worry about it so much because you've got you and, and our department head that, that take care of things, so.
It's the only committee, isn't it, that we have two liaisons on?
It, I mean, it's not that I don't...
Yeah, we tried to slim them down, I think.
I mean, it's not that I don't care about it. I'm supportive of it. I think they do great work. So.
Can't be in two places at once.
That's my story.
We can try.
Any other updates, Mark?
No, uh, conservation's coming up, uh, I think, just the thirteenth of April.
Eric?
Well, not necessarily liaison issue, but something I did manage to get accomplished. Notice the sign was fixed in front of the West Rockport Fire Station, the median sign? Yeah, I spoke to MDOT, they got that fixed. And I also have got the putting in, I do not block the intersection sign, which is why that little wooden pole is sitting there.
We need to have Richard Remsen come back and, I think we need to have a roundabout.
I discussed that.
No, no, listen.
We discussed it, it, but I spent an hour on the phone with the person and it was a discussion we had. Unfortunately, it just doesn't fit.
In that space, yeah.
It's not a big enough space. So, but there is some work planned for that intersection, so.
Yeah, because the accident rate is horrible.
Yeah, mostly coming from Augusta with the traffic turning west on ninety. That's where the majority of the accidents occur. There was like eight to ten in a period of time there and going east on ninety with the turn, it's only like four or five, and almost nothing on ninety, which I was totally surprised about. It's not the turning traffic on ninety that's the concern, it's the traffic coming up over the hills.
That's the thing with visibility.
Surprisingly enough, the road on ninety, they won't allow be two separate lanes because it's not wide enough.
Right, I asked that.
So when you have two separate lanes, you have more accidents when you're in a lane that's supposed to know what they're doing.
Yeah, right, but I just thought I'd point out that the sign was back.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Because it got clipped off a lot.
It's probably been clipped off a few times, so, exactly.
But it's a nice new one.
Yes.
And I'm happy about the do not block the intersection sign.
That's huge.
That's gonna go there.
Yeah, that's a great.
Because I was like, yeah, it's way dangerous and it's very annoying.
Kinda hard to turn on a Park Street with a, with that, you know, yeah.
So I did manage to get that accomplished.
Thank you, well, that's wonderful.
Well then, isn't that something that during, during Richard Remsen's conversations, there was a point in time where we were looking at moving where Park Street comes on to Route ninety.
Yeah.
Further towards Danica.
Yeah.
Which would, it would square it up more so that you could come in more safely.
I think that would make a lot of sense.
Discussion about that at one point.
Yep.
But it, I don't think that can happen any day soon.
No.
Next week, Eric.
Next week.
Get that right, that's on your list for next week. And I will just say, uh, and I know Orion's on, but he's been doing an incredible job with the Comprehensive Plan Committee, uh, guiding them through and we've got some great members on there, um, a lot of surveys, trying to get survey results from a variety of folks, so if people haven't done a survey, do it. We wanna hear from you, so, thank you Orion for your work with that, with that committee.
Thank you.
Um, and that's it for me, so.
If I could add one more thing.
Yeah, please.
The REs, for the REs, I, uh, New High Group, they finalized some dates. I'll be sending some emails out to watch for that on when the public engagement.
Oh, great, thank you.
Yeah, there is a new meet, a meeting day, right, April sixth?
I don't, well, I don't know, I didn't check my emails before I came, so that's why I didn't mention it.
So it's in process, okay.
So, I wasn't sure.
I've, I've got a meeting with Megan tomorrow to finalize something at the Opera House, but, um, April fifth is when the first public engagement meeting will happen.
Oh, okay, so, kind of.
Yeah, we're trying to get another, the committee meeting before that, but nobody's available all on the same day.
All right, um, do we have a motion to adjourn our regular select board meeting?
Sure, I move the board adjourn the regular select board meeting.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? John Strand, I see you, thank you. All right, that is seven fifteen. We will move into our budget workshop. So, um, just to set things up here, as you know, the...
Did you have something, Orion?
Oh, sorry, Orion, did you have something?
No, I was just gonna say bye, see you later.
Oh, okay, thank you, Orion.
Thank you.
Enjoy your evening. Um, just to set this up, so, uh, as most of you know, the select, we, we all met as a large group. Wow, seems like a lifetime ago, but a few weeks ago. The select board met several times, um, we sent... We sent our recommendations to the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee met last week, last Wednesday, I think.
It was a very long meeting.
It was a very long meeting, yes, it went, I don't even know what time, but it, I.
Eleven.
Eleven, I knew, like at ten fifteen, I was, I, I was like, I gotta go, gotta go bed here. It was a long meeting, I will say, I will say thank you to the Budget Committee. It was a very thoughtful and a very thorough review of the budget, and I know it was a lot, it was a big ask. They did send back four recommendations based on that, so I want us to spend some time reviewing those. There is a memo in your packet that came from Jeff Sharland, the Chair of the Budget Committee. Those recommendations primarily were around the FSA, software for assessing the harbor revenues based on an agreement with Camden and then funding for signs for the Parks Committee. So I would like us to focus our time and discussion. John, I don't know if, for these particular items, if we have to do a motion and vote on, on each of them? If we just need to discuss them as a group, I don't know what the protocol is for reviewing those.
I think my recommendation for you would be to, to take them up one by one.
Okay.
And to go through and effectively, they're making a recommendation to you, to the, the five of you, to say, do you, we think this is a better idea for the budget than what's in your budget that you've proposed? And so I think probably the, I, I think I would use them as agenda items effectively and handle each one and then make decisions as to yes, no, or something in between.
So this is, is also our opportunity to address other, other things. I mean, I, I only bring that up, I think, because of something that Jared had mentioned. That given where they had taken us to, six point seven percent, we're automatically gonna be starting next year with a six and a half percent figure. I think that's, you know, I'm just, I think that was Jared over here. So we're, I mean, we're already assuming a six and a half percent increase next year.
That's, he was referring that to the use of this unassigned fund balance.
That's what I'm thinking.
Right.
All right.
So he was saying, because of the use of the unassigned fund balance in this year's budget, you are already either gonna have a six and a half percent increase or you're gonna have to come up with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue.
Well, and that's basically, I think, what I didn't clearly enough state is that if we use the three fifty, we're gonna be starting next year with, with a six and a half percent increase.
That's the problem.
And that's what, how we started this year.
And, and I. And I guess what, where I'm going with that is I, I would like to think that we could look at stuff to find some other savings where we don't end up going behind at six and a half percent next year. I could think of three things which aren't necessarily gonna be popular, but I don't think it's a time to grow government. I think the one position that you had asked for, I, I wouldn't be necessarily this year in favor of. You know, and I wouldn't be necessarily in favor of spending forty-five thousand to do the petitions this year. Out in the Richmond. So, you know, and then with paving, I know we need to have pavement, but paving, but can we trim that back by a hundred thousand? So with those three things alone, you're looking at around two hundred thousand or potentially only a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of UFB, which then doesn't start us off so far behind next year. I guess that's my thought on it. I mean, I, and I was there and I listened to these things, I agree with the things that were presented. But I think we need to, we need to do some, you know, what, what do we have to have to make things run? What would think, what things are there that would be nice to have? And I think the two things that I listed, the person, because you're growing government by a person, and the addition of back, I mean, that's something that we don't have to have this year, we can do next year.
But I think we're at a point, though, I mean, we've gone through this, how many hours at this point?
Yeah.
I mean, I think we're at a point, and not, and I'm not discounting what you're saying, believe me, I know it's, with this, it was down to six, seven, I think we agreed at our last meeting, it was seven, one. We could put, we could pick this binder apart for the next two weeks.
I guess I'm just gonna, I'm gonna tell you upfront, I'm, I'm gonna have a hard time swallowing being, using three fifty and being six and a half percent behind next year.
Well, you wanted us to use six hundred thousand in the last meeting.
No, well, I mean, you had, but, no, you're absolutely right, we had to start the conversation somewhere.
Right.
Pick a, pick a number.
Right.
And, and when we look at things in general, you know, two years' worth of pandemic that we, I hate to even mention. And then, you know, where we are now, I mean, things, you know, we didn't anticipate, you know, having heating costs. I mean, we've added more money into our heating, but some people don't get to do that. They have to make more difficult decisions when they add an extra thousand dollars into their fuel costs for their home. That they, that they don't have the, the luxury that we do, you know, by just saying, hey, yep, your taxes are going up, that's how we're doing ours.
Right, and completely agree, and as taxpayers, I mean, we, it's, we all, we all get hit with it. We all get hit with, we also all get hit with crumbling roads and.
And I, and I, and I agree, the roads, you know, like I said, I'm not knocking that back a lot, but.
Well, and is the position, the planner position, because that's.
No, the buildings and grounds.
Buildings and grounds, I mean, it's a, what is it, a twenty-three thousand dollar?
Twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three thousand dollars.
My thought there was the buildings and grounds position, could that start as a part, like a seasonal, like the first year maybe do it as a six-month run just through the period where you need all that extra, the extra person for the mowing? And you can do the exterior work, and then in the winter, when it's not so busy, the one person can do the interior work. And then the following year, bring it, that person back or another person to make it a full-time position.
You'll have more of an evaluation period with your supervisor to know what would be needed and not needed, I think, during that time.
All right, so can we, can I just make a recommendation that let's work through these recommendations from the Budget Committee? Let's first start there.
Yep.
Because we may or may not agree, right? So I wanna first start there, have the discussion on those, we will end it or we will summarize at the end and determine what, if anything, other discussions we think we need, but I don't want us to forget. And, and get distracted, because it's easy, we could, like I said, we could open this book up and go line by line, and I don't want to do that. So we will start here. The first recommendation was to reduce the employee FSA to a thousand dollars per employee. Originally, it was twenty-seven fifty. We reduced it as a Select Board to twenty-two fifty. Comments on that?
What's the savings? Five hundred was fourteen thousand, so.
Thirty-four, thirty-six, two fifty.
Yeah, that's what I estimated, okay. Complete with bringing it to a thousand?
Well, this is a, this would be in addition to the fourteen thousand.
Fourteen, we already did, so forty thousand, if.
Fifty.
Yeah.
Jared's comment also, because I questioned this, because part of, I think you made the motion, Eric, was to, to reduce to twenty-two fifty. I said that part of that was, there's an effort to discuss the fact that there'll be, you know, some effort to, to get to the full number next year. And of course, Jared, with his awry sense of humor as it is, was to say, well, I'm sure it's gonna happen, it's an entitlement. I don't view it that way, that's not my, that's not the way I view it, I view it as every year is a new budget year. And, but if that's the direction that the Select Board says in a prior budget year, and you've, you've been through, you've all been through multiple municipal budgets, the conversation that happens in one always feeds to the next. You know, the conversations about, we wish Harbor had more, more ability to raise fees. Guess what happened in this budget? The fees were raised, so, so these things do feed each, there's no compulsion, but, but there's, one does lead to the other and, but it, it takes policymakers saying that, not, you know, to help.
I mean, personally, and I'll, I'll say it again, and I said it at the start, I, I don't, I think we need to attract and we need to retain talent. And I think that that's an important piece of offering a good benefits package. And I can support the twenty-two fifty as we had discussed. Listen, I know it's an expense to the town, but it's also gonna be an expense to us to hire someone, train someone, and try to bring them up to speed, and if we don't think people will leave because there are other communities hiring with benefits that are better, I can tell you, they will. I was surprised, honestly, Megan, when you went through the plans the other day to talk about the deductibles. Because I thought the deductibles were very high on those plans. Like, I was surprised by that, I pay a lot for my insurance, but my deductible isn't as much as those deductibles on those plans. And I think when we talk about insurances, when we talk about people being in difficult times of their life, having to go to the doctor, throwing someone a bone is not a bad thing.
In one respect, I mean, there are three, three sort of levels to this. We're already giving, we're considering to give a six percent raise. We're bringing employees from seventy-five or eighty percent or eighty-five up to ninety percent on their healthcare. So that, that's already a, a good step towards what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
And is it a bad thing to, to start at a thousand and then work your way up? I mean, that's just, I mean, I think that was part of the conversation perhaps the other night.
Absolutely, and it was, absolutely. Any other thoughts?
Maybe just to, to bring back to where we came from and how we got there. You know, the initial thought is, you know, retain the good employees, attract new employees, right? And so our ability to do that, they're not looking, wages are part of that conversation. But by and large, people who look at municipal work, look at, look at benefits. It's, it's, if it's not A, it's one B, right? And so having that package that is alike or near our neighbors is, is important for us when someone's weighing offers. So it's important for us to be in that market, understanding, we're not offering ten thousand dollar sign-on bonuses like some municipalities and some counties are, we're not offering, you know, cash upfront or extravagant options. We didn't do any options through the pandemic. My approach since I've been here is, you need to build things in your program that are part of building those efforts going forward. And you can't, you don't wanna be in the situation where Knox County just went through this, where they, their pandemic monies were going to end, and they had to say, well, are we going to continue or not? I think Eric, I think you said it like, that doesn't work out so well. And so I've tried to stay away from that and recommending some of those issues. I look at that money as really better for infrastructure and things like that in terms of my own outlook. But this is about building a program, and building a program that is supportive of employees and employees see this is a direction that not just the people who are doing the hiring, but the people who hire the people doing the hiring understand how important it is to value employees and to ensure that they're compensated. And so it's, you know, the six percent is, is obviously the, the thing that, that brings to mind. If, that is, that is absolutely the first, I think, that, that brought, brought to my eyes, we're doing the budget. But the challenge is that that's a cost of living adjustment. And if we live in that world where we lose cost of living adjustments, cost of living means that that's the cost of living. We aren't, we aren't, we're, we're raising at the same rate, five, nine, or whatever, and we can talk about point one percent. But five, nine, or, or six percent, whatever you want us to call it, that, that's, that's the cost that we're saying that that has increased over time, it has the same buying power now as it did twelve months ago. When truthfully, we know that's not true, it's seven point nine percent now, but regardless, we'll put that aside, we'll put that aside. My point is, is just that a strong benefit package is important. And if we have a number of employees who are, you know, getting to the end of their tenure just because of where they are in their own lives, I wanna be able to hire professionals. I wanna hire, I don't, I, I don't wanna hire first time people out of the box. I don't wanna hire people that I'm, I'm taking chances on. I think we have a high standard of, of expectation in this town, we should have a high standard of expectation in this town. We have one point two billion dollars in valuation. We have Route One, we're between Camden and Rockland, where, where some people say we're the prettiest little village in, in the coast of Maine. Okay, sure, it's home to me, but that's where we are. But the people who live here expect us to show pride in what we have. And to do that means you have people who have that pride in what they do. And I don't want to be in a situation where I'm forced to hire people who I don't think have that vision, don't have that view.
Because it's the best you can get.
Right, and I want, and these are people, I think that you, I, I think that the board, and we've all talked about it, how important that is. And so that's what, that's what I guess I look at with, with this conversation, whatever the number is. I, I, I'm not, you know, you guys worked that out, this, this is your budget at this point. But my, I guess my outlook on that was, I want people that, I want people who, who have pride with that Rockport logo on their, on their shirt, whatever they're doing. And I, I wanna make sure we continue to do that in the years ahead. So that's, you know, that, that's why I've, I've lived so much on that benefits and salary side of things in this budget, knowing it's a tough budget in other areas. But that's, that's what's nagging at me, is I really wanna make sure, I feel like we're getting our most out of the town of govern, the town of Rockport's tax dollar and the, and the taxpayers. And that, that's why, you know, we are where we are.
Well, and I, I think we've, we've got to be competitive. I mean, we can't be the, the sort of cheap place in the mid-coast area. I mean, we've gotta be competitive to attract the talent, we need to run this town, so. I mean, that's where I come out, and I, I feel like we have to rely on John and Megan, who've done the research, to determine what makes us competitive for hiring, hiring the best and retaining the best.
So, and, and we are, I mean, we're, we're offering a cost of living, which is equal to what everybody else is getting. Well, let me, it's not what everybody else is getting, but we're offering what is being considered to be. You know, and we are increasing what we're paying for healthcare. And we're offering something that wasn't in the budget last year with the FSA. So do we need to go all in on that the first year? I guess that's my question, because it is something that wasn't there, that we're adding to the budget.
Right, right. And just in terms of putting the package together, being that guy in that spot, that you've hired me to, to somewhat say, how do I put the package together to, to talk about it, right? You know, I looked at that model, the hundred percent for everything, all the time, no matter what you do. I think that's gonna go the way of the dodo bird, to be honest with you. I don't think that's the direction that employers can afford, nor do I think it's, it's, it's what the employees want. I think we're going to a world where employees want choice, they wanna make decisions for themselves, they wanna be able to, to have some, some agency over, over the monies that are being spent on their behalf. That's why I like the FSA, and, and it still allows them to, to try to remain whole. But on the other hand, when we're looking for new employees, younger employees, you know, that's, they're gonna be looking in that way. Whereas our neighbors elsewhere will be paying more for the same, for what they think will be the same pur, purpose. But in the end, I don't think they're going to have a happier employee. I think they're gonna be looking back and employees will say, I like the fact this is flexible, I like the fact that I can do this or that. You know, having been one of the town of Rockport's most recent employees, you know, I can say, when we went through that process, looking at the personnel policy, it, it read like, you know, a little bit antiquated. And admittedly, I'm somebody who lives in this world, so I know how this works. And maybe some other employees we would hire maybe not, don't have that experience. But I do think the types of things we're looking for out of our employees and what they're looking for from us, I'm not sure without change, we'd be able to, to say we're able to meet those needs. I think that's, we have to evolve, you know, and I don't think this is the, the only thing, won't stop tomorrow. You know, whatever decision you guys make tonight, it's a, I think it's a question of a constant evolution, you know, to get better.
But we are doing it, I mean, we are doing that, and I'm not even gonna use a six percent, let's disregard that.
Right.
We're doing it in the fact that we're taking people from where they are currently to ninety percent in the healthcare.
Yep.
We're doing it by starting an FSA, which has never been there. So we are evolving, okay, so it's not like we're not.
Right, agree.
Receptive to evolving.
Oh, and, and I'm not, don't, don't misunderstand me to say that I don't think we're doing it, I'm just saying, I want you to understand why we created what we created.
Okay, so why don't we come to a consensus, is either we support this recommendation or we don't, don't support this recommendation, I mean, that's what we have to get to, right?
That's why I think we're spending a lot of time over twelve hundred and fifty dollars, I mean, you know, it's not, that's the individual, but not in total.
Right. Right.
It's a larger number.
So, I guess by show of hands, the recommendation was to reduce the employee FSA to a thousand dollars per employee, down from twenty two fifty. So, by show of hands, who supports that recommendation?
I don't want to be the lone wolf, thanks.
Okay. Did you, uh, your, where's your hand up?
Well, I would like to go somewhere in between.
It's half up.
I wanna make your life easy.
Okay. So, in regards to the recommendation to reduce the employee FSA to one thousand per employee, down from twenty two fifty. Who does not support that recommendation? And what are you, are you half down, or are you, what are you?
I'm half up and.
Okay, well, it's three.
I'm going halfway.
Three, two, or three, one and a half, so. So it will stay at twenty two fifty. Um, next item, wait on purchasing the Patriot software for the assessing department line, uh, thirty fifteen. The backup material does not specifically identify the cost of this software, so would need to be reviewed with the assessor.
Yes.
Do we have details on that?
So the amount that, so I I did talk to to Carrie about that number, and and the difference is actually. That is actually for mobile, the mobile assessor.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, and then Patriot came out of the revaluation. So the difference is mobile, now mobile, if mobile, if we don't do the mobile, if we don't do this.
And it gets more expensive, right?
It gets more expensive, and Camden then would have to put off their purchase of mobile as well, which, that's on them, but.
Right.
Um, it's, it does, um, you know, it does somewhat. Cause some, it causes some upset in terms of how that relationship works. I I guess my, and we talked a little bit about this, uh, talking about some changes in gear. My only recommendation at this point for the board is not to move too deeply in the area of assessing, right now. Um, uh, to really.
I think that's a wise choice, based upon.
We're not experts on.
Right.
The, I don't, I don't, I would try to, anything that's within that world, that budget, department budget. Can be reallocated in any pathway that you need to, given events at that time. So, should circumstances warrant, you can reallocate those funds within that budget.
You want me to say it?
Or I can. I should say.
I'll say what you might be thinking, but, no, I get it.
I I.
Things change.
Things change.
There's so much in the air right now, and.
I think that that's a good approach.
What's happening.
Yeah, and I sort of view assessing as our revenue source.
Yes.
So we don't want to hamstring assessors.
And, because I can't resist, I mean, that's what I brought up the other night, is. You know, if we think the planner and the code are important enough to take them from thirty to thirty two. Our assessor is, in my opinion, far greater, and not to have them forty hours a week here. My opinion is a problem.
Yeah, it's a different question, but yeah.
Yeah, no, but I mean, you know, we're.
But that would allow us some flexibility if we, if we did not, if we don't make changes to that particular budget.
Right.
That gives us some flexibility.
I think we have a lot of flexibility with the budget as proposed.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, that's just my recommendation, is, not that I disagree with the spirit of the budget committee trying to find.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that.
I I, there's too many balls in the air at the moment, unfortunately.
So, in regards to the recommendation to wait on purchasing the Patriot software for the assessing department line thirty fifteen. Um, do we agree with, who who agrees with that recommendation to wait on purchasing the Patriot software? Who does not agree with that approach to wait on purchasing? Or, I I mean, I guess I should say on changing that, that line item or budget.
So there, there's no way in the world that this will be ordered prior to July first. Um, so that it comes in after July first and, and then it's purchased, I guess what I'm, I'm trying to make sure.
As the old purchasing agent here.
I'm just trying to make sure we, we retain our flexibility.
Right.
I agree, yeah.
Let, we need to have a lot of answers.
Before we make a large purchase.
I would, I would completely agree with that concept of, let's, let's, let's iron out all the, everything that needs to be ironed out, and then. You know, move forward if 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 everything works itself out, that would be my hope.
I think that that's a good idea, that's a good point, Mark.
Yeah.
Um, okay, uh, recommendation number three was, our, uh, add to the harbor revenues sixteen thousand for reimbursement from Camden. From the Harbor Masters time at the snowball during the winter. Um, the only concern or thought I had about this is, we don't have that agreement for next year, so.
That was wondering, do you know?
Recommend sixteen thousand.
There's no guarantee.
Camden could come back and say, no, we're not gonna pay, we're not gonna do any, any agreement, number one, so we'd be down eight. Um, or they could come back and say it could be twelve, so I'm a little bit, I'm leery about putting sixteen thousand in. For a contract that we haven't talked about yet. That was my concern.
And I would agree, I I just, I I think at the point was, we we need to ensure that we.
Without a doubt.
Are made whole.
Absolutely, without a doubt, and the other thing, other point I will make is that, whatever the agreement is. The board needs to approve that agreement, like, we need to be part of that, and part of those discussions, which did not occur this year. Um, so, and I, but I am, I'd I'd like to be conservative in the fact that, while I think it's. There's a potential maybe that could happen, I just don't want to set ourselves up.
It's better to overcollect than undercollect.
Exactly, right, exactly.
Just saying.
So regarding adding to the harbor reserves sixteen thousand for reimbursement from Camden, for the Harbor Masters time at the snowball during the winter. Is there anyone that agrees and would like to add that? Uh, who would disagree with the adding the sixteen thousand to the harbor revenues? Okay.
We're not, we're not all for adding revenues.
Absolutely, but I just don't want to set ourselves up.
There's no guarantee that it will happen, or that she'll want to do it.
Exactly, right.
Right.
Um, the fourth recommendation was to remove the funding for the signs requested from the Parks Committee. Line fifty three eighty in the Parks budget, and I believe that was four thousand.
Think so.
Megan?
Uh, yes.
And conversation was had about the high school again.
Trying to get the high school to do those, um, I think the conversation that happened as I was watching the live stream is. That, people thought it was confusing, right, like, welcome to Rockport and Glencoe, welcome to Rockport and West Rockport, welcome. Welcome to Rockport and Rockport Village, you know, that people thought it was confusing and maybe not necessary, added upkeep, added expense. I think the other um, comment or question was regarding the sign directing people to Walker Park.
Yeah.
I think that was the other one, that while people thought. It could, it's a nice to have, and that, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of a jewel, right, and do you really want to be driving a lot of extra traffic to that?
Right.
Um, okay, so on recommendation four, remove the funding for the signs requested from the Parks Committee. Line fifty three eighty in the Parks budget, who is in agreement with that?
I would like to just say as the Parks Committee liaison. Um, I totally understand where the budget committee is coming from, and I'm voting in favor of this recommendation. But I do want to be careful with the Parks Committee, because they do so much with so little.
Incredible work, and, and it's not, I I know, because it's not a ton, when you think about it, it's not an incredible amount of money.
And they themselves.
They're the ones who are out with the shovels and the and the rigs.
Getting a lot of donations in.
Yes, absolutely, it's absolutely no reflection of that whatsoever.
No.
Um, okay, those were the four recommendations, um, from the budget committee. Megan, if you make that recommendation to, uh, we keep in the software, we take the eighth thou.
I just closed my laptop, sorry.
All right, well, Megan will be back with us in a moment, okay. Um, if we fix line, the the third recommendation with the harbor revenues. And we remove the funding for the signs, what does that?
Frozen.
Oh, it's frozen, okay, we'll give you a moment, we'll give you a moment on that.
So we're down four thousand.
Right.
We've just taken four thousand.
Right, we've taken four thousand out.
It'll get there eventually.
But we were at seven one.
Seven one.
And they were at six, seven.
We're at six, seven.
So you're probably still at seven one.
Probably. Maybe, oh, nine.
It's still thinking.
Hello, can we discuss that position then?
Uh, we can.
Well, the budget committee's gotta have another meeting anyway, because we've made changes to what they've recommended. I think it's not how that goes.
No, technically, because this is just their recommendation to us, we have the final.
The only reason they have to meet again is if you make changes outside of your original.
Original recommendations, right.
Otherwise, they just vote on their recommendations, right, their.
Right, which they've effectively done, so they voted down the first three.
And we.
And accepted the fourth one, so.
Okay.
The only reason the budget committee would have to meet.
So if we make, and if we make additional changes, the budget committee would have to remeet. In order to review and approve any of those. And what I really want to try to avoid is this back and forth, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I feel like we have discussed everything.
I mean, we've gone through it, I think our time to make those recommendations was last week. Um, not to say that, listen, this gives me heartburn too, I mean, we've gotta open our checkbooks and. Write a tax bill with a new assessment, and, I mean, this week, next week, we're writing our, opening our checkbooks to write checks. So, it's not, not easy.
Seven oh seven, you were close.
That was close. So, what's the consensus on next steps? We've re- we've reviewed our budget, we've reviewed the recommendations.
Um, well, what we've done in the past is you vote on the total expenditure, the total revenue, and then at budget. And that's your final budget.
Did we do them individually or as a total?
I think you can do it as a total, because the net is gonna be whatever it is, so.
I mean, I.
I mean, Ken always insisted on doing them separately, but I don't think you have to.
I mean, I, and there are some things that I still don't agree with, so I don't know as I would vote. You know, if somebody asked, I could explain why there might be a no vote on a certain thing. Versus explaining why I voted no for the whole thing.
So do you want, we can go down individually, I'm fine with that.
I'm just asking how it had been done, as my recollection that there were, it had been done both ways, and.
Are you talking in terms of total expenditures, total revenue, or do you want to break it out?
Department?
Each department, I'm just asking if that's.
I I don't, I don't think we did that last year, but, yeah, I think we just did it overall, but I don't want.
I mean, we could break it out, like, it would show on the warrant article, but, I mean, that's where your vote is really gonna show, is when you do your warrant article votes.
Yep.
Right.
You'll have your recommend, not recommend.
Well, and that, and I mean, I I would rather reflect it here than I would have a negative vote. You know, maybe show up on the.
Are you recommending or asking that we go, like, department by department, would you feel better doing it that way? Or just doing it overall, I guess I'm, I'm not sure what you're, what, what you're trying to get to. I know you don't want to vote down the whole thing, but are you saying that there are certain components that you would say, yes, I agree with that, or no, I don't?
I guess I, I would, I think that there is trimming that could be had, although it might not be popular, I just still don't think it's a time to. To grow government, if you will, to make another full-time employee, or perhaps to do the, the additions to the Richardson room. It can be done next year. You know, um, I mean, it's not that much, but it's something. And I think that it is a big pill to swallow, and again, yes, I did say, let's start at six hundred. We ended up, I just thought.
Just wanted to remind you of that.
I'm just taking, I'm just taking the thunder out of somebody's. But, you know, but, I mean, in, in all actuality, I mean, we're at three fifty, and we are gonna start next year. At another painful place, if we don't use.
Right.
U A B.
And I, and I do not disagree with that at all. But I also think if we continue, if we continue to go through this and whittle away. We're gonna be in a situation next year where we gotta add more, because we didn't do what we needed to do this year.
Well, yeah, but I mean, instead of starting at six and a half percent behind next year. You know, is it, is it more palatable to be three percent behind, where you still have some.
Well, and the roads are going into reserve, so it's not a given that we spend all that, if if we don't have the manpower, the project, I mean.
And we'll be, and we'll be budgeting next year for more money, you know, for the same thing, so. Um, anyway, just my.
Well, I I would like to put it out to approve, like, who who approve who's who declines, that, we okay to do that?
Total.
Total.
Just the net. Okay, so, the net budget is five million forty seven thousand four hundred and ninety seven dollars.
All right, you're gonna have to give me that again, five million.
Five, zero, four, seven, four, nine, seven.
Four nine seven.
Mm-hmm.
That is a seven point oh seven percent increase over last year.
Net, once you combine the schools and stuff, but that's just your budget.
Okay. All right, so, our budget is five million forty seven thousand four hundred and ninety seven dollars. All right. John, did you have something, sorry? That was a weird.
I got mad at my battery, sorry.
All right, so, um, budget of.
And that includes conservative assumptions we've made on revenue coming in, I mean, I think.
That is correct, we did reduce some of those revenue streams based on act, what we're seeing as actuals. We increased where we think that we're gonna have challenges, heating fuel, gas, propane, et cetera. I mean, I think we've done in in our best effort to.
Plan ahead.
Plan ahead, protect our taxpayers as much as we can. Um, so, I would like to put out an agreement for the budget of five million forty seven thousand dollars, four hundred and. I probably just said that wrong.
Five million, forty seven thousand, four hundred and ninety seven dollars.
All right, and those in favor? Three, those opposed? One, two, okay?
And and I'm, just to add to that, I'm not against some of the things we're doing.
No.
I just.
Completely get it. There are some things you think that we could hold off on till next year, completely understood. Okay, anything else budget-wise that we need to discuss? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn the budget workshop?
I move the board to adjourn the budget workshop.
Do I have a second?
Please.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you. It is, uh, what time is it, seven fifty two? Okay, that concludes our regular meeting, we now have, um, an executive session. So can we?
Yeah.
Yes, so we will conclude our regular meeting.